You all set? All right. All right, everyone, welcome to the Town of Baltimore's Own Board of Appeals meeting, February 5th, 2025. Would you stand with me in for the Pledge of Allegiance?
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
I want to be able to see the back of his head once before.
So, under new business, this is kind of like just going to be informal, informational for us. So what we'll do is we'll, we'll do the old business first.
Okay.
With, with rent, with the rents.
Got it.
And, and then we'll have time to, at our leisure here, sit down and go over the material here with, with Mr. Kizlak there and.
You got it.
Okay?
Sounds good.
So our next order of business is, Randy?
The rolled maps here are the large maps for Randy.
Okay, okay, all right.
The rolled ones. Yes.
Okay. So, we have a, we have Randy back before us because the, because the planning board had a, had a question and a reservation about the, the ability of pulling property from one non-conforming lot to, to another non-conforming lot. And we did, we did contact our town attorney. And, and we went over this whole issue with her. And, and they said there was nothing restricting us from, from, from doing that. And so Randy's back before us. And, and so one, one of the other issues, and the reason really he's back before us is because we have, we have to grant him a, a, an additional variance. Because the garage is, is an attached structure. And, and there was a, there was a misunderstanding between the planning board and us apparently about, about the needed variance that, that, that was required. So, you know, we was under the understanding that it would, it required 15 feet. And actually under state determination because that building, that the garage is attached to the structure. It's, it actually requires 25 feet. But, you know, seeing that that was actually all the, the property that Randy was able to gain from his neighbor. And we are, we are, we have before us also a, an appeal to, to, to have a variance for that also on the, on the side of the garage. So if you look at the map here, his, his neighbor, who is his sister, is, has granted a, an additional, it, it runs from 15 to 19 feet along the, along the garage, the proposed garage. And so, I'm looking at this backwards here. So we're right here. Yeah, yeah. And
Yeah, originally, the planning board refused me. I got the letter, the planning board refusing me because I didn't have the 15-foot variance. So I said, okay. So I talked to my sister and she said, I'll give you 12 feet. So while when I came here, it was three feet and you guys says, get to 15 feet, it shouldn't be a problem. Well, in the meantime, somebody dug up more stuff because the garage is joined to the double wide. It's 25 feet and for separate from the double wide, it'd be 15 feet, which makes absolutely no sense to me whatsoever. But I did what I was told to do. I spent a couple thousand dollars doing it. And then more stuff came up. So basically, that's where I'm at.
Well, we also consider, Randy, that, you know, throughout the state, these, these, these setback, setbacks vary anywhere from five feet to, to 25.
Yeah, yeah.
And, and you know, and so, so much of these decisions are contingent upon the circumstances.
Right.
With, with the movement of the lot line. Is it, is it going to, is it going to cause complications? Is it, is it going to be objected by your neighbors? You know, is it going to change, is it going to change the, the quality of the neighborhood? These kind of things.
Yeah.
And so, and, and you know, this is, this is a little bit of a small development on Hadley Drive there.
Right, yeah.
You know.
Yeah, I know, my call has started and so.
Yeah, and so, you know, and we, we have a, we have a, we have a lot that was actually grandfathered in, so to speak.
Right.
But, and I know Pat Langer was, was presiding over this.
Yeah.
Back in 2017 when this was done. And they came before us on the planning board. And it's one of these issues where, you know, it, it wasn't ideal at the beginning to, to sever this, but there was no other alternative, you know? And if, you know, and people do this, if they have in-laws or some, someplace else, they, you know, you know, we were able to grant these, these variances for these things. And, but, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna read through this and and this will be, this will be up to the, it'll be up to the board here to make a decision on, you know, whether to grant this or not. But, you know, does anybody have questions about this board or, or out here, you know, about, about this at all that we can, we can explain or we can, we can talk about?
I guess one of the, the only question I might ask is, the footprint of this, is that the, actually, is the, at the foot, since we're working such close boundaries here, is that the footprint or is there overhang there that's going to overhang into that 12, 12 feet or 15 feet?
No, no, that's the footprint.
Okay.
That's going to be the footprint.
No eve sticking out three feet?
That's going to be the footprint with eve.
Okay.
Yeah.
Perfect.
Yeah.
The, and like Bill says, I mean, you know, there are certain areas that 25 feet is no big deal.
Right, yeah, like my other.
We've had them in the hamlet.
Yeah.
You know, where you've got a building that's on your property and you want to put a shed and, you know, 25 feet is halfway through your house. So, you know, I mean, it's.
Yeah.
Well, on the roadside of the building, you have 15 and a half feet. On the upper side, you have over 19 feet.
Right.
Which, you know, which, which is comfortable to allow you to do any maintenance or structural work on the, on your garage, which, which is good to have anyway, Randy.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
Because if your sister's house changes down the road, you know what I mean? And you have somebody there and you, and you got to get permission to set up scaffolding or something.
Yeah. And that's why.
It's a good thing to have.
Yeah, and that's why the last time I came with three feet and everybody says, uh, just get the, just pay the money. It's like, all right.
Yeah, I mean, and that, and that, that, that actually worked in your favor.
Yeah.
Because you, you want that buffer zone.
Yeah, that way you can get around it. Yeah, yeah.
Absolutely.
Yeah, yeah, I agree. I wish I could have just, because I got plenty of room on the other side, but with the well where it is, I can't, I can't do nothing about it. Because I had 40 feet on the other side, but.
Yep. The well at Leach Field you're talking about?
The well, I can't move, if, if I could have moved the trailer over towards the south side, it would give me more room, but I can't because the well is right at the driveway. See, I have.
So I see, I see the, I see the well, but see, the other issue is, is this setback too? Now that this footprint is bigger, that there needs to be a variance granted for this, just not to meet the 25.
Yeah, even though in the letter I got from refusing from the planning board, that says that's 15 feet too. So I just went by the rules that were set by me. So I don't know what happened with that. Because I thought it was 25 and then I was told it was 15 and I, I got the letter stating that, the refusal letter stating this, it's 15. I don't, I don't know.
That was from the planning board?
That was, yeah, it's right here from the planning board. It says right here, they were refusing it because I didn't have the, the 15 foot on the right side and the 15 foot in the back.
Yeah, that should be 25.
Yeah.
That's 25.
Which I've already talked to all my neighbors. I told them what I was doing and they said, from what you had there to what you're going to do, I am not worried about it. You're going to do something that's going to look very nice and we ain't got to worry about it, which they're happy with. Because I purposely talked to my neighbor out back and my neighbor across the street. And they're all happy that the trailer's gone and.
Oh, it's an upgrade. It's an upgrade to the neighbor?
No, no. And I'm trying to sell my house, I don't need that trailer there. And it wasn't pretty.
Yeah. Becomes a, becomes a rodent trap and, you know.
Yeah, that's what it was. Yeah, yeah. It'll definitely look better once it's, once I get done someday.
So what we can do is, we'll complete this part two short environmental assessment form.
Number one. I'm sorry.
Check.
You'll get there, you'll get there.
That's one.
We'll, we'll make a copy of it.
There's a bunch of negatives right at you. You're still good.
So number one, will the proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulations? No. No. Will the proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity of the use of land? Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community? Will a proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics that caused the establishment of a critical environmental area? Will a proposed action result in an adverse change in the existing level of traffic or affect an existing infrastructure or mass transit, biking or walkway?
Yeah.
Will a proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy as it fails to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities? Will the proposed action impact existing public, private water supplies or public, private wastewater treatment utilities? No for each A and B. Will the proposed action impair the quality or, impair the character or quality of important historic, archaeological, architectural or aesthetic resources? Will a proposed action result in an adverse change in natural resources? That is wetlands, water bodies, groundwater, air quality, flora or fauna? No. Will a proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding or drainage problems? And will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health? No. So we, we're determining based on the information analysis above and any supporting documentation that the proposed action will not result in any significant adverse environmental impacts. And so we're going to, we're going to, we're going to read this proposal and it's going to be contingent, the, the final adoption of this is going to be contingent upon the planning board proceeding and okaying the lot line adjustment. And then also the, we'll have a public hearing scheduled for next week and.
Next month.
Next month, I'm sorry. Next month, next meeting.
Yeah.
And, and as long as there is no, you know, substantial objections to it, you know, we'll, we'll vote on it. We'll vote on it now with that, with these, with these, you know, so you understand that these are, these are contingent upon them. And so here's a, here's a resolution we have before us. Whereas Randy Lent, Shelley.
That's the.
Oh, that's the old one, I'm sorry. So here's a resolution granting, denying area variance. Whereas Randy Lent, wishing to construct an attached garage on the parcel bearing tax map 1701, 1.8 at Hadley Drive, Anticraway, New York, submitted a building permit application to the building department for a placement of a primary residence less than 25 feet from the side and rear boundary. And whereas, application was denied by enforcement, code enforcement officer Jordan, and applicant referred to zoning board of appeals. Since pursuant to chapter, section, chapter 12, section 11210, dimensional table, article five dimensional regulations of the town, of, of the code of the town of Baltimore, minimum setback from side rear property boundary in the town of Baltimore agricultural zone is 25 feet. And whereas Randy Lent submitted to require variance application at the December 12th, 2024 zoning board of appeals meeting, seeking relief from the 25-foot side and rear boundary requirement. And whereas recognizing that this property has previously been granted a variance as a non-conforming lot. And whereas transferring any variance previously granted. And whereas after further discussion by the members of the town of Baltimore zoning board of appeals at its February 5th, 2024 regular monthly meeting, it was resolved that this action be granted a negative declaration for the purpose of seeker and it be further resolved that the variance be approved with conditions that the town of Baltimore planning board approves the lot line adjustments between 51 Hadley Drive and 39 Hadley Drive. And that a public hearing will be held with no opposing comments. I make that motion to accept the resolution?
I second that motion.
All, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All in, all opposed? Motion carried. Resolution is now contingent upon those two variances. And
And that's, you were, the lawyer's already been contacting you, right? So that's, you've talked.
I haven't.
With emails?
I emailed him back, but I haven't gotten maps or deeds. I don't know if he was sending that right to the lawyer.
Yeah, he said something about the map has to go to the planning board to be signed?
The Mylar map has to go. I don't, we don't have a Mylar community yet. The, we just have the paper map. Mylar is like a, like a thick card stock.
Okay, that's got to come from White.
That comes from him.
Okay.
And then once we have that and the deeds that have been approved by the lawyer, it comes back to the planning board next week.
And we got to get our cards out.
Sign on that.
Yeah, we got to get our cards out. Come up tomorrow and get all that stuff?
Yeah, I have your letter and your list of people.
Does, Brendan was saying that the deed had to be, well, you guys have to look at the deed, but you, it can't be put into the county until your lawyer approves it.
That's right.
I don't, I'll, I'll talk to him tomorrow, but.
Right.
He said something about.
That stuff had to go to the lawyer first because she has to review it and say it's good. And then it comes back to the planning board. And then we, you know, Rob will sign your map.
All right.
And then you take that stuff and you file it with the county.
Now, when is, when do I need to have that to you, by the next planning board meeting?
Well, ideally, that's what we were trying to do, but that's Thursday next week. And I don't know if that's, I don't know if it was sent to the lawyer yet or, or what's going on. I did get back to Brandon last week or Brendan last week.
Yeah.
But I haven't heard anything since and I haven't gotten any like attachments with deeds or maps or.
All right, I got to find out because he said something about the, they got to approve it.
And it's fine if he just sends it right to the town's lawyer.
Well, he's saying that the board has to sign the map. I don't know, I don't know how all this works.
After, yeah, after the deeds are approved, then the, the board will sign the map and then you take them all and.
So basically, he's got to send everything to the town lawyer.
Yes.
Okay. I got to figure out.
Yeah, Rob will be handling all the lot line adjustments.
Right, yes. He said he was just going to, yeah, he's going to bring it up at the next meeting, but we got to have it done.
Yeah.
All right. All right. I'll, I'll have him figure that out.
Yeah, as this is good.
Yeah.
And then this will go back to the planning board as well.
Yeah.
And then once the deeds and the maps have been reviewed, then Rob can sign off on them and do the resolution.
Okay.
All right.
For the lot line.
Yeah, yeah. All right.
All good, look with it all.
All right, and next month Pam will be here. I will not, I'll be out of town.
Okay, okay.
She'll come up.
Okay.
For the public hearing. Answer all the questions. If she doesn't.
We'll save them all for next month.
Yeah, you can call me, I'll be at a hotel.
I, I have your list and I have your list of people and I have your letter.
Okay, I'll get it tomorrow?
Yeah.
Okay.
I can just email it to you if you want.
Oh, all right.
Either way.
Yeah, don't matter.
Okay.
Sounds good. So I'm all set?
All set.
All right.
You're all set.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
Thanks a lot.
Yeah. Hey, we apologize for the mix-up there earlier and, you know, and I know it's been, you know.
Yeah, it's been a little crazy.
Yeah, it, it's stressful, of course, of course, you know, so.
Well, I don't have no stress anyway, so. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Take care. Good luck.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
I'll pick up.
I'll be.
We'll see you, thank you very much.
All right.
Yes.
You can't pay me to pay that back.
We'll take.
We'll see you, Roger.
Like a bribe to me.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Michelle.
What did I do?
Yes. Mr. Kizlak.
The last one standing.
Hey, we just wanted to invite you over because, you know, April's been explaining to me a little bit about the situation and, and there's a lot of consternation about who's handling it and who's what. So we figured we have you over and you could show us what's going on and we can hear it, you know, hear it and see it.
Yeah.
And maybe we can put all our heads together.
Yeah, I just got the, the survey map actually, like they find those, like the, the line.
Oh, yeah, did they, did they find the town line?
I mean, one monument is on the, on the true way and the other is like one mile away from my lot.
Oh, serious?
And then they, they aligned them and they found the lot line.
Did they? Wow.
They did it with $3,000.
Who was it? Hi?
Praetorius.
Okay.
Yeah, it's in Sagratis.
Okay.
Okay, so, yeah, my name is Slavik and my first name. So basically, if, if we take the tax map, so I have, I have more. Yeah, I have only like this and this.
They got them.
Oh, 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 you have the big one. Yeah, you have the big one, that's good. You don't have a map. So basically, like I got this like small square lot with the house. When I was getting it, in my deed that was saying that I have a 25 feet right of way to the Skeller Park Road for any type of use. And then like the lot's supposed to be like that, like all like straight lines and everything. So when I got the lot, I, I did the survey. Because like I, like usually I do the survey if something like that is happening. And the survey find out that the actual lot line goes kind of like, like that. And there is like a stone wall. And then the deed that says that my 25 feet right of way goes along the stone wall. So basically, like my right of way never touched my lot. So in order for me to come to my lot.
I don't think that makes the right of way then.
I need to trespass my neighbor's property. So, and then like it's also showed that my garage is on his land and my septic is on his land. So it showed like a lot of things. So then like I approached my neighbor and I got very lucky because Mr. Boyham is, is my neighbor, the one who has like the apple farm. And like we, we tried to like find a solution for all of that. And he also owns like, this is his lot and he owns all of this big lot behind. So we agreed that I'm getting from him like the big lot. Because obviously like there is nothing he can do over there because my, my lot is kind of like in the middle.
Right.
So kind of he can have like an easement and just cross my lot and go to like back, backland. But like it makes no sense because it's just like woods over there, there is nothing. And then we also agreed that I'm getting a small strip of the first lot where my driveway is right now. And my driveway is there and obviously like I can use it because before I did the survey, I also did the underground high voltage line. Because when I got the house, all the poles were down and it was no electrical service. So I dig down the underground for electrical. I uncovered the well, the septic, I mean, like I did a lot of stuff. So the driveway is there, I was using it, like everyone was using it for like 40 years. Nobody questioned where it's supposed to be until like I got the, the survey.
So let me ask you, was Jebby, was he interested in selling you, selling you this lot up here on the road?
But that's his house.
Oh, that's.
The house there, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, right, right here is his house. Right here.
How many acres is that lot?
I thought his house.
Uh, his lot?
Yeah, his house was online.
So the top lot.
Oh, I see, we're making.
Yeah, so the top lot is 1.5.
That's all that.
Yeah, so this is.
Yeah, with the pound.
This is the drop.
I didn't know that, he's got another house.
I didn't know that.
This is the drop subdivision that.
Oh.
That I just got.
Okay, okay.
That I just got.
Okay.
Maybe not in our world, but.
Okay.
Other worlds.
All right. Okay, so there's a house, there's a house.
Oh. That used to, that was, who was it? Dan's Motors. Dan's Motors. Okay. Right there.
Okay. And so like on. Where's that in relation to Lampman's? I mean, how far?
Down here.
That?
Yeah, you got Bernie Jones in between and then Lampman's is down here.
So where, so where's, where's Lime Kiln Road?
Oh, it's, it's over there.
It's way up here?
It's right here, if you look at it. It, it makes a turn, it goes straight and then makes.
Okay, so you, so you're buying, you're, you're acquiring the back lot as well as, and then you're trying to, then you're doing your right of way to get out.
Yeah, I just got this map today from the surveyors because the, the issue was this like. Oh, yeah. Both of those lots, the one that we see like on the map, they're both in the deed stating as one lot. So nobody knew where the town line is.
Right.
And we agreed with him that because my house is in Caxaki. So we agreed that I will buy all the Caxaki lot. And nobody knew where it ends and where New Baltimore start. So we spent like two months or three months with surveyors trying to find the monuments. Like they went through all the deeds, all the, like even here, like they says that like one monument is on. Like they went through all the deeds, all the, like even here, like they says that like one monument is on two way. So, uh, and then like today, like they gave me the, the draft, um, a survey of the subdivision. So the thing is like his lot was one point five, so it was already non-conforming.
Right.
And I'm getting like this strip from his lot and it's gonna be point two nine. Obviously, it's gonna be non-buildable lot because it's just the driveway there. But without this thing, I, I'm kinda like landlocked.
Landlocked, right, yeah.
And, uh, we, we agreed with him that we don't wanna do any like right of way adjustments or like easements or anything because like i- if he wants to sell. There is an issue. Like if I want to do something with a lot, there is an issue because like people will question like why like the house. Because right now from Skeller Park to my house is five hundred feet because I dig that line. I know that. Um, and like, so we found that like that probably is like the permanent solution of that issue. And plus like if I'm acquiring this big back lot, that also makes sense that I have that strip.
But this is an existing right of way now, right?
Yes.
It, it's just that you don't own it.
Yes.
Give a survey map, showing that, how did you know the right of way?
Oh, it's right, it's right here on the, on the survey, the right of way is marked, uh, so the driveway is marked.
Right away.
Yeah, the driveway is marked with the, like those strip. But on this lot, on this survey, on the subdivision draft, they didn't put like the actual like right of way because it goes along the stone wall. And it ends right along the stone wall right here. So between the right of way and my lot, there is like another like forty feet of space that I have to jump. So. Yeah, so basically, without the survey, I couldn't like, we couldn't apply for any like subdivision or anything, but like today they finally like finished it. So, and I was already at the planning board and they said like, they, I think the only like, uh. The only like thing that they said me that the front of that strip lot, because it's a driveway, it's supposed to be not thirty, but like forty or like.
For a flag lot.
Yeah, forty lot?
So you're.
Yeah, so.
By, by you purchasing this right of way.
Yep.
You're actually turning that lot into a non-conforming lot.
It's already.
It's already.
It is?
It's a, it's one point, right now it's one point five and it'll be one point two. And now it's one point five.
They're shooting, they got it written as one point seven right here and this, the right of way being point three.
Oh, that's the old draft. So this is the, this is the actual like survey draft and here are proposed areas of the parcels. So it's one point five seven three and then the proposed is point two nine.
Okay.
So, uh, it, it's kinda what it is.
Does anybody live in this house?
Uh, yeah, my neighbor.
Oh, James lives there?
Yeah, and, and his son, I think, and his dog.
Oh, Ben?
Yeah.
I, I see his dog like a lot.
Yeah. Uh, yeah, actually, I think his son lives there or something.
Mm-hmm. And I mean, like I even see his, like his father, when I was digging that thing, he was very interested like how I'm doing that.
Hmm.
So I didn't want to install like six poles to, to get electrical. It was like cheaper to just like get the excavator and like.
And if I.
Everybody likes to watch construction.
Chime in a little, um, I talked to the town of Koksaki.
Did you finally get hold of him?
Yes, uh, um, and I let her know that what the planning board wants is that once you buy the big back lot. If we subdivide his driveway, that they do a lot line adjustment to include that in his deed.
Yep.
So that the deed reflects that the driveway is a part of that back lot.
Yeah, that would work.
So that it's not a standalone. I mean, it's still gonna be a standalone parcel in the town of Baltimore.
The, the lot line is, uh, the Baltimore and then that's Koksaki.
Yes, yes, and that's where the.
Yeah.
And I think Koksaki said that they will take lead agency for the environmental board.
Have a letter in there.
Yeah, but the rest.
And that would be fine, well, you know, long somebody's in charge.
So what is, what is this back part? So what's the overall, so we're actually, you had a non-conforming lot up here, you had a non-conforming lot back here.
That's the one that I bought.
The one that you bought, yes, non-conforming.
Point eight five something.
Yes, but we're actually gonna make one, one of these lots is actually gonna be conforming when we're, this is all said and done, hopefully.
So, yeah, that one's gonna be like five something like acres in the back, but it's all in Koksaki.
That's in Koksaki, yeah.
Yeah, and then like the front gonna be point two, just the driveway.
Yeah, point three.
Point three, yeah.
Um, okay, the only one I'm really getting, I mean, so left to Jim, but he's cut himself short.
He had come for the planning board meeting too, like he was here present with Mr. Kizlev to just say this is what we're doing.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, it's. It's his property.
Yeah, he's, he's probably not worried about it at this round, you know, he's helping somebody out and that's, that's.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's good, so that'd be a, that'd be a rental house for him.
Yeah. Yeah.
There was just a lot of like stipulation over the town line and making a non-conforming lot from a non-conforming lot and making sure it's not buildable and. If they wanted to widen the front so that it can be considered a flag lot or I, I don't know.
It was almost conforming at one point seven. Jim?
Almost.
You know, just raises a, is this on a, is this on a septic system or is this on the sewer?
Yes, it's on septic. It's not near the circle drive.
Gotcha.
Little development there.
Yeah, but that's just water. There's no sewer.
Because they actually had said that in the beginning when they first talked about dividing it, that he might have to pay a water bill on the driveway.
Is, is there, so he's got water?
I don't think, no, it's not.
No, it doesn't come up there.
They determined it wasn't a public.
Yeah, he was doing a new well last, last, last summer.
Water.
Yeah.
Public order stops right just above Circle Drive.
Circle Drive. Yeah, well, it sounds like you want it.
No, it's just only the issue would be Jim shooting himself in the foot if he ever had to put a new septic and not having, obviously setback requirements from well. It's just, you run into that issue on a smaller lot like that, a hundred feet from the well, two hundred if it's downhill. I know there's some hills through there. I don't know, without looking at the property, but.
There's an existing, there's a house there.
I know.
Yeah.
But he's just. Like I said, he's always, almost conforming at one point seven, but now he's, would that point three acres be the spot where a new septic system would go in ten years? When it fails or could be twenty, thirty? That's only, that's my concern.
Hmm.
Um, you know, I know it's an easement right now too, so it doesn't really.
Yeah.
Now, would you?
Still a driveway with, with rocks. So, uh, the thing that I'm taking, so why, like the stone wall, those are rocks.
I know this is, uh, you know, if you had the surveyor kind of pinned where the driveway is a little bit more, I don't know.
It's pinned there. That's, that's.
This is just a straight line. I know that, but.
No, that's.
If the property you bought followed the driveway, uh, better per se?
They, they just did it for the.
I know this is.
Cheaper, cheaper bill for me because if they would pu- put those like, uh, points there.
Yeah.
They need to like pin it to GPS and then like create like another twenty pins. It's just the bill gonna be like more than like two straight lots. Because now they, they just found like basically like four points and they did like straight lines.
But they did all these pins on the outside. It's not really too much work for them.
Ah, but those pins on the outside, they took it from the deed following the, the stone wall. Uh, so, and plus like we agreed also with, uh, Mr. Boyham that like it's easier if it has like straight lines rather than like.
I would just like to see Jim retain as much property on this, on this small lot as he possibly could. Uh, in the event that he needs to expand septic system.
Also like right.
And like you said, you know, he put in a new well last year. Obviously, this has been here for a while. Things start to fail.
Yeah, but also like right here, this line is the underground. So we just stepped like four feet from the underground line and put the line. So this, like the outer line is the underground utility, I mean, like a high voltage. Because there is no way to go left because, uh, there are trees, then there are like line of rocks and like another rocks and the driveway in between. So I had no choice, like either I had an option to dig through the driveway or through the rocks or through the trees. So they agreed with him that I will just like go like, like right here, like I go like around the, the, the rocks. And that's why like there is, the driveway kinda goes to the right.
Saying is this, this is pinning this line that's gonna follow the driveway or the outside of the utility line, just giving Jim as much land. At that, you know, point one or point two acres he might need one day. That's just my thought.
But.
That this line would, would, if you have an outside tree line or an outside, this is just a straight line, pin to pin that the surveyor did.
Uh, I'm trying just to explain you that you see the underground utility.
Yes, I see the underground utility.
It's four feet from this line.
So the underground utility is this line right here. So it's not four feet right there. That's what I'm saying. So this line.
But here there are rocks and, and trees. So basically, like I understand that you're trying to see, to tell me about the septic or like leach field, but. Those things are kinda like useless.
Yeah, but trees, new construction trees get cut down all the time to put in leach field, so it's not, not the end of the world. But that's just, that's what I'm thinking. Cause I like to.
I don't think you're gonna give enough usable. But to run that, run that along those, that, that driveway, give enough usable land to make a difference if he needs.
You don't know until you're, until he's there twenty years from now, you know?
Well, I need to find a picture to show you what's there.
Yeah.
Um, so, and, and those like four feet. Um, it was September. Alright, finished. Um, understand what you're saying and like I, I respect your worries about, um, uh, his land and like, because like. Myself, like in, in Sagertis now, I have lot like point two one and like there is nothing there, like there is no space for anything. So it's always better to have like more land, but at the same time, he never used like.
An acre and a half is actually a good sized piece of property.
Five acres behind me or anything from the, from like somewhere here stops his lawn. And all of that is, is just like mix of like rocks with woods with everything.
Yeah.
And the lawn starts, stops somewhere here, like right behind the house, maybe like ten, fifteen.
So, so now what's the town of Koksaki telling you is, is, is what you need to do in, in, in their words?
Uh, nothing over there. It's just a lot line deletion. So I just, uh, send, I just give them the survey of this big lot.
Yeah.
And they delete those lines and they, uh, kinda like the big lot consumes the small one. So instead of like having like non-conforming and, and, and the big lot.
Yeah.
They will just like combine it into one.
Yeah.
And put this one in the deed saying that that's part in New Baltimore.
Okay, okay, include that into the lot line adjustment.
Yeah.
Basically, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Switch the tubes over.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't know if you really need to record this anyway, yeah.
I know, but if they ask me for it, then.
It's okay, yeah.
You know, gotta CMA on that. I would hope that YouTube.
You're on, you're on two strikes now, so.
I hope, I would hope that YouTube would suffice for that.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's the spot where, where we went more. So that's basically, that's my driveway. So when I dig the line, the line is like three feet from the driveway. And that's like the closest I can get without like going over the, the road to the house. And then, uh, like on this, on the other side. Yeah, so when I dig that, so that's my driveway. So it's like one feet away. So it's not that I'm like going all the way to the woods.
Yeah.
It's like, I mean, it's right there. And then it just follows. So that's the spot where, uh, where it goes a little bit further. It's just, there are, I don't know, like twenty trees over there and there are like rocks between them. So I hear like I entered between the trees, but then like I had to, instead of like cutting like the oak, I had to go like a little bit left. So that's why here, the, the underground just like kinda made that, that turn. And then here the tree stops. So then I went back straight to the driveway.
You made a good point too. There's just, what'd you say? Back here, just rocks?
Yeah.
Big rocks that, there's some, I know Sheller Park, there're like rocks the size of.
Oh, my God.
So I'd be curious. I, I just, I don't wanna see him, you know, he's not gonna be able to put a septic, a new septic system or something back here or even drill a well. Oh, with those rocks. I don't know the lot personally, but there are a lot of rocks up there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, drilling is never a problem with rocks, but, uh.
Well, if you had to set up, yeah, if you had to set up a rig or something, those, yeah. I don't know. That was my only, that'd be my only concern. And then put a, we put a exclusion of sorts of any habitable dwellings on that.
Yes.
In the town of Baltimore on that point, whatever it ends up being.
The planning board had also said something like saying it was exclusively a non-buildable lot.
Don't want into other.
Yeah.
Issues down the road.
Right.
We'll save, we'll save zoning board members headaches thirty years from now.
I'm twenty.
Point three acres.
Twenty feet wide. I mean, it's a driveway.
Yeah.
What, what do you guys feel about the road frontage? Would that make a difference to you guys or can it stay thirty?
What is the?
You're gonna have to grant the variance.
It's the highway department, so, because you have to put.
Call the highway department.
I'd be curious because you mean put a new driveway, new construction, you're always.
Right.
It's an existing driveway, isn't it?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
It's a private drive.
All of that, they were saying.
But they liked, when you put in a new private drive, you, they like to be notified.
Right.
Well, suppose because they may have the covert, you know?
Yeah.
Right.
Especially, and I know this is a town road now, a county road, but.
Yeah.
Like I had to get the county ball for numerous things, putting in driveways and they like to come out and, and see, and I know what's existing.
Right, I think that the planning board is just saying, because it's only the thirty feet, if it was forty feet, then it would be a.
I don't see an issue.
Regulation flag lot and then I think Bob Court had said.
You could tell.
If they have to get the variance anyway, then they don't need it to meet the forty feet.
You can tell the highway it's a new lot, if they wanna go out or the town, I don't know, they, they don't have any issues with it. I don't see why we would.
I don't.
Okay.
That'd be the only person.
I don't see why they're even.
As long as it's not a safety.
Considering like, uh, designating it as a lot, the portion that's in our town, it's a driveway.
Yes.
Yeah.
I mean, it's a right of way.
Well, when we're subdividing it from the other piece, then it's gonna be.
It is a lot. It is, at the end of the day, it is a lot. I think it's a good idea, you know, whether you have an easement or, you know, obviously you like to own.
Be able to, you know, it won't be landlocked anymore.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, and that's.
The driveway.
That's the whole thing, absolutely.
I think it's a, I think purchasing it is the right idea, definitely.
Yeah.
Um, yeah.
But that would definitely go to the planning board before us anyway and, uh.
Right, I think that they would, they said that they would need a variance granted from you guys to subdivide from a non-conforming lot. And that's why Mr. Kizlev is here, just to show you guys what's actually going on before it starts rolling forward.
Yep, now, is there any like application that, uh, my, my, my neighbor needs to submit for like subdivision or because like. We agreed with him that I'm taking care of all the like surveys and like all, all of that stuff and I just give it to him. Because like it was no survey for like his lot or like anything. It was no surveys. So, uh, uh, how, how it worked was the procedure. So now like as we have found the, the monuments and now we can actually like know what, what's the size of this lot. Because I think in his tax map, it even says that it's a bigger one that it is truly by the town line.
Yeah.
Because I think he's.
Well, Jim's gonna have to fill out a subdivision application.
So he's.
His property. He's not selling the whole thing.
Yeah.
He's gonna need to fill out a subdivision application first and then, you, you know, you've outlined the, the lot that you're buying. Um, that's, your attorneys can handle that, but I think, I think Jim's gonna have to, it's his property.
Yeah, but before, before I can buy the lot, it has to be subdivided.
Correct.
So, so I asked him to, to fill out the subdivision application, submitted to April. But then like we still have to go through the zoning and planning again.
Yeah, Jim's just gonna do a lot.
To approve that subdivision application.
He's subdividing it off. He's selling it. It's Jim's property.
So he doesn't need a variance to do the subdivision then?
He might, cause he's confirming if it was four acres and he subdivided it to two conforming lots, then no, but now that they're, it's already not conforming lot, but he's making another non-conforming lot. Because that's what this is, is a lot, once you purchase it.
Right.
Then there need a variance.
Right.
For this.
So, just so I'm clear.
You're gonna pay taxes on that point three acres in the town of Baltimore for vacant land. It's a lot.
Right. So subdivision application to the planning board.
Denial.
Denial.
Backed off.
Variance for the zoning board, back to the planning board. So.
And really that's all that'll be done through Jim.
Jim has to do it. Jim has to.
Hey, it's the owner of the property.
Yes, he's gonna have to fill out the application. You could bring it to him, he's gonna fill it out, get it notarized, bring it back in.
You could do all the legwork for him and everything else like that. You know, but he, but he's gotta be present.
No, I understand.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Uh, but the planning board is next week?
Yes.
Yeah, you're not on the agenda for next week though.
Okay, so it's gonna be March?
Cause I hadn't talked to you about anything and the deeds weren't finalized.
Yeah, and like this thing, I, I just got it today in the morning because like they were working for like.
That's good, that's good timing.
We were waiting, it was good timing, but I'm pretty sure they.
To give me at least something to show, cause like.
We just had you come in so we could help your brainstorm.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And I think maybe they wanna make sure that everything goes through on the back lot first, so that it gets all at one time.
It's contingent on the back lot being approved.
Oh, so you want me to first purchase the back lot and, uh?
Right, that way when we subdivide that piece of driveway, it connects to your lot. If you don't own that lot yet, then it's just a floating point three.
Got it. So, so, so just for me to understand my, my course of action, I purchased the back lot.
Yes.
And you're gonna purchase that with the, well, well, you have a right of way already. So you can purchase that. It's, it's not landlocked. A right of way.
Oh, yeah.
You have a right of way to it.
Yeah, if I buy it now, like I still, I can, I can go there.
Yes.
So I purchased the lot. Then, uh, for the March planning board, uh, uh, Jim is coming with the subdivision application. They denied. And then in April, zoning board, you approve it. And then in May, planning board, he gets approval for the subdivision?
No. Uh, because we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to get a public hearing for it in May.
Public hearing for that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
For the subdivision, yeah.
Okay, so the May is the public hearing and then June?
June would be the, maybe the final resolution on it from the planning board?
Could be smooth as silk. Could he, could he get it, could he get it in the maybe?
Six months.
After hours?
May, May? Yeah, if we have a public hearing in May and it is, it always calls before the planning board meeting, so maybe we could.
You could put him on and we can always cancel.
Yep.
Right.
So you, you could get on the planning board.
If, if he gets delayed, we could cancel it, right?
Okay.
Yeah. And that way he's, that way he's.
As long as you come in for next month, March with the subdivision application, then in March, in April, it'll go back to the zoning board and then in May we'll bring it back.
Public hearing.
For the public hearing would be the first Wednesday in May and then the second Thursday in May. So the very next week would be the planning board meeting. And that should cover your resolution for the subdivision.
Okay.
And then Kokosaki would just have to, when they do their lot line adjustment, include that.
Okay.
In there. Like that the driveway is gonna be in there, even if it's a contingency, right, that once it's all done, the driveway is going to be included in the deed.
Okay, is there a way to do the public hearing for the next planning board when it's gonna be denied? Like send a letter out?
The, the, the public hearings for the zoning board, we need a.
Yeah.
Ah, it's for the zoning, not for the planning.
Yeah, they're gonna send, they're gonna send you to us. But you have to go to them first.
I see.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
This is all just so you know what you need, so that you're not.
Yeah, we're, okay.
We're trying to sneak there, exactly.
Even though we're still doing that, that before. We just wanna make sure that you get.
You are going in the right direction.
If you'd like, I can just email you the application.
Yeah, yeah, that's a good, yeah, that's a good.
And I'll give you an owner consent form and then you can have, uh, that filled out, Mr. Boyham. If you wanna represent, then I think that allows you to represent him as long as it's signed and notarized.